Regional Planning Commission. I'm gonna do a... Who's here? Richard Black.
Here.
Janet Miller Schmidt. Absent. Ed Provost.
Here.
Dwayne Harmley.
Here.
Peter Beasley.
Here.
Marilyn Robyn.
Here.
Ava Russell. Here. All right. In our packet was the previous meeting minutes, plus our special PC meeting minutes. They're pretty extensive. When you have a chance, make a motion to approve or make any changes.
Motion's approved.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Staff and community reports. Planning staff. Anya.
The only report I have is that Dean Lay's plan had been approved.
It was?
It was approved, I think, before that last city...
How did the P end up?
No. How'd that happen? I thought he withdrew that.
This is, okay, from Garrett. Dean Lay submitted a revised minor subdivision on March 8th, and after reviewing the plan, there was a few changes that needed to be addressed prior to the recording. Prior to recording, once the changes have been made, it appears that it will meet the town zoning ordinance and subdivision regulation requirements and be making it round for signatures if it hasn't already.
And already has?
Yeah. He changed the P.
I guess so. I haven't been as involved with that process.
I just remember the P quite a bit. All right. Did you not? Am I...
It's the P.
Yeah. All right. Building inspectors' report.
I guess it's been made so far. We've talked a lot about manufactured homes, and I think for last meeting... Do I need that?
Yeah, sure do.
Anyway. Anyway.
No.
No, it doesn't sound like it's working this stuff.
It's red stuff.
It says, oh, what about now?
No.
Test, test.
Anyway.
Anyway.
I have a lot of discussions with a gentleman who sells Clayton Mobile Homes in East Ridge, Riffing Park guy. And we had talked about different kinds of decals on the side of manufactured homes and definitions of different types of manufactured homes. I brought with me tonight... Well, anyway, I've got a copy of a red decal that goes on every manufactured home that's manufactured in the United States. And they are manufactured based on HUD and federal requirements. I may have walked off and left that. I did see one. It's a red decal, and it says, and it's made it put on with ceramics or something where it can't be removed, and it's called for HUD. And the home was built based on whatever regulations for HUD or... And that is for a single wide, for a double wide, it's on all of them. And it's a federal deal. Once that home is sold and is put on a job somewhere, it has to be installed by Tennessee Lottery installer. At that point, there's another... There is a real decal that peels off that the installer puts on the unit itself. So they put the double wides on both units. And they typically put those on the cabinet door in the kitchen. And what it does, it's got a serial number on it, and it goes to the state, and it keeps the state advised of where that particular home went and who sold it and all that kind of stuff. Those are presented double wides. Another thing I found out, that I told y'all a few times on, I told you that Clayton Mobile Homes made a tiny home that was legally used, could be legally used to live in on a permanent basis. That is not true. Clayton Homes makes a tiny home, but it doesn't carry anything other than a recreational vehicle sticker on it, which means it was designed to build in, live in for less than seven days. I also found out another thing. We talked about modular homes. Well, the true definition of a modular home is a home that is constructed from scratch for a particular zone. In other words, we in Tennessee work for the... For the United States, we're in what they call Zone 4H. That means wind loads ninety miles an hour, snow load's gonna be ten, you know, ten pounds per square foot. That same modular home cannot be put over on the coast where we have hurricanes, tornadoes, blah, blah, blah. That home is constructed based on what their wind loads and snow loads are. That's when they become a modular home. And that's what I was told today.
Is when they're constructed for our zone?
When they're constructed, yeah. If you... But you can have a modular home constructed for our zone, but it's gonna be constructed for ninety mile an hour wind loads and ten pound snow loads. But that same modular home in, let's say, over in South Carolina, would be a different... It'll be constructed more stronger to stand one hundred twenty, one hundred thirty, well, maybe one hundred ten, one hundred twenty mile an hour winds. And, you know, the snow loads are not gonna be a factor, if you understand what I'm saying. So I want everybody... I want to clear that up.
So we have to be aware of what zone they're coming in on?
That's true. It's not a big deal.
Okay.
But we've talked, you know, we've talked about in the past about decals that play some mobile homes and what they really mean, what they mean. And that's what they mean.
Earl, does that pose a problem when you buy a used home?
Well, I'm sure it would. It probably wouldn't be anything that would be detectable as far as making an issue out of it. But legally, that's how it's supposed to work. I mean, you'd probably buy a home somewhere else, you know, a home from here and safe to South Carolina. Nobody's gonna care. It'd probably blow away with a first storm coming through. But nobody would... I don't think... Legally, I'm not sure that's an issue. There's three things, four things I wanted to talk about real quick that I think is cooking. And this body right here is gonna have to be ready to... And we're... I think we're working on it, but I just want you to be aware. Accessory dwelling units. Anya, I think, has already been doing some work on that. That's something that you're gonna have to face, however you're gonna do that. It's difficult, you know, with your existing zoning ordinance, you can't have two principal structures on the same lot. So if you've got a mother-in-law or somebody you need, somebody needs to be taken care of, you gotta figure out some way to have something there with them that can be their... Maybe they're in a little private place. That's what they call accessory dwelling units. And that's something we've got... But parts of that, we've got to work with. How are we gonna do this? And there's several answers out there. Tiny homes. With tiny homes, they're gonna... I get calls every day about where to put a tiny home, a tiny home community, or both kinds of things. And it's not gonna go away. We're gonna have to deal with that. We need to be ready for that. Agritourism, which we taste a little bit of that already. That's something that's coming, that we need to be prepared for. I got one more thing that happened. Well, I told people this morning, you wouldn't believe how many phone calls that I get sometimes. One night, I got thirty-seven phone calls. But I got five yesterday, just for Montego. And it's just crazy. I mean, they're from all over the United States. I'm gonna show y'all a piece of property on the zoning map right here that I was talking about yesterday. And it's right next to Cody's Grill. And it's just a big piece of property. Right here. Huge. And a gentleman asked me, he said, I wanna put a boat pole barn in here and make a little shop there and, you know, and then I wanna build a house sometime later on. Well, here's the way I've been dealing with them, say. Good, bad, or ugly, I don't probably nothing in any of the ordinances that anything do with that. But in my experience, I've found that if anybody's building an accessory structure before they build a house, they'll start living in it, and the house may never get built. Or I had an instance one time of a gentleman who wanted to put a... He owned a shop working on vehicles. He... There was an R1 district. He had a nice piece of property in. He wanted to build him a shop out there to work on his cars before he built a house. And we don't want that. That's not what R1's about. But anyway, I advise the gentleman on this property that he would need to build a primary structure before he could build an accessory structure. Well, somebody else called me today. And they're talking about the same piece of property and somebody probably that works with this guy. He says, what if we go in there and we build a pole barn, and we put part of it, you know, it's a living area, and the other part's gonna be to keep the lawnmower in and all this kind of stuff. Now, they're the names of that. What is it, Anya? Anya, what do they call those things? House barns or house something? I can't remember the name.
Barn block?
What? I guess that's what it is. Which is something we're gonna have to deal with. Well, I told him that, you know, if that's all he's gonna do, that'd be fine. But he says, I wanna build another... I wanna build a house out there, too. I said, we can't have two principal structures on the same lot. He said, well, I don't wanna go to the planning commission. And I just split the lots into two different lots, and I'll build my house on this lot and my barn and residence on this other lot. I said, go for it. It's absolutely legal to do that. Would it not be, Anya?
Yeah.
But I get those all the time. But seriously, y'all need to tell me, if you think I'm wrong when I tell them I won't let them put an accessory structure up until you got a primary structure. If you're not... That's something we might want, you know, roll on or just decide to do it or not do it or whatever.
Does Montego have a temporary use permit?
I'm sorry, what?
Does Montego have a temporary use permit?
No. Not normally.
I've heard of other communities allowing temporary, like with a time constraint. So, and then they, after a year passes, it comes to the board again to be discussed if you can continue living there or if you need to build a primary house. But it kind of gets...
Like it's sticky.
Anyway, just put that in the back burner, something you might want to think about. Tell me how you think you need to do it. I also got a call yesterday, maybe it's April. This little mental health facility over here, well, over here by the doctor's office. They've got, I think it's a ten or fifteen unit. Hamilton County Mental Health. Everybody know what I'm talking about? Okay, it's right by the... It's right by the rest home. Right in front. The rest home is right behind it. That unit's right there. That, I was... They inquired to me about adding ten rooms onto that structure, which you would think that, you know, it may not be a big deal. But that's the zone. R2, I believe.
Yes, but they're protected.
I sent them to you.
Right. And we looked into it, and they are protected by state law because they're considered a commercial enterprise. Even though they're not performing use, they are able to expand.
And is this a day use or is it overnight?
No, they're overnight.
They stay there.
Provide services.
That would raise issues, I think. Does state still do CLMs? Certificate of Needs for beds, still done in... Do you wanna speak?
I don't know. I didn't look into that. But I just know that they're protected because they're a commercial enterprise. So they are allowed to expand even though they're not in the correct zone for a group home. And they're across the street from a nursing home, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When I get those gray, those gray things, I've got somebody I can go pick for that.
So they would have to expand it, probably.
But there's some properties that they can...
No, they're extending in the bathroom.
They're cleaning it.
And they will send their site plan to us review, and I'll probably come before you guys do it, as well.
Yeah. Because she asked me what needs to happen, and I said, well, once we get past the legalities of it, then you'll need site plan.
Do you know she's protected by state law?
And all that stuff. And then I've got, I've got a checklist to fill. I'd like to check this. The mayor gave me to look at. And in my opinion, we've got people that do check lists. And I don't know if I'll be able to do an extra check if I have to, to be honest with you. Of course, I'm just a building inspector and the police understand whatever I do to say is because I've been here many, many years, and I try to do the best I can do for Montego any way that I can, typically. So you've got any questions, I'll try to answer.
Have we figured out the tiny homes yet?
Thank you.
Okay.
Now it's...
In your, in your anticipated zoning manual, there is a big section on tiny homes. And it reads, I mean, it makes a lot of sense. And you've got the same thing in there on site plans. You've got the same thing in there on RVs, recreational vehicles. That, you know, if you don't read it, you don't know. But a lot of these things that are... Have become somewhat of an issue are actually addressed. Anyway.
Well, one of the things you might wanna mention, Earl, of course, you got the same calls I did, and I've been responding to them. And they came out and saw Deb. We had two, I guess, two different realtors? I guess it's realtors with it, Deb. He came in in two different areas. They want to develop two tiny home communities at this point. I'm just saying, they want to develop. We're leaving it at that. I don't know if they've reached out to y'all, but they're wanting to set up meetings, and there's not many meetings scheduled with anyone.
Yeah. And one of them is in a R1 segment.
Yeah, one of them is in an industrial section.
And another one, possibly... Well, that's a break up no segment. The other one is, I think, maybe even out in Montego City limit or in the growth boundary. So it's out of our purgatory, way, way out. I think it's in...
That's crazy.
But I get a lot of calls, especially about things like that. We had another, I had another call, another call on an RV park, which sounded promising. I mean, to my end worry it was gonna go, you know? But we got to looking at it, and it's out of the city limits. And it's right, right down here, right down here, you know, by Cross Interstate. There's an area right there, it's got a big V in it. It's not in the city. That's where the property's at.
I told him he had...
It wasn't in the city.
I told him that he could be in the county and not put any of the RVs on the portion of property that are within Montego city limits. And I told him he could request to be annexed and ask if he was still able to get utilities and services. But I didn't think that he had much luck rezoning, so I told him not to go in that. He could try.
It wasn't rotten in the end. I don't know what I did there. I don't know if we didn't need it.
Well, I have a whole team behind me. Ed, did you have a question?
I had a motion, please. Procedural motion?
Yes.
For this commission to vote on. That motion is that prior to a vote by this commission that there be an open discussion on that issue by the commission and the public, and not wait to the end of the meeting to bring these issues up after we've already voted. Could be worded better, I'm sure, but that's the motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion curious.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Will this be done during this meeting or will you...
Next meeting.
Next meeting. All right, thank you, Earl. You are an asset. I don't care what anyone says.
Did you hear that? In the light of part?
I get that a lot.
You're an asset.
Okay.
All right.
He's heard that one before.
Anyway, all right. Moving on to old business, new website information. Earl, you said you reviewed it. We tabled it from last meeting. All looks good, that we can add.
See, I think it's fine. I mean, it's one of those type things that if after a while, if somebody sees something they don't like, it's easily fixed.
It's easily fixed. Okay. All right, so we can add it. Do we need to vote on that?
No. We're just... It's positive.
Okay.
As an L4 Lynetta to do.
Okay. Perfect. And then speaking of this next item, which is the Trinates book right here. Marilyn, what do we want to do with this?
Well, I talked to Earl, and he feels like it's another one of these things that we need to go slow. I mean, he's my advisor, both, you know, and Anya in Southeastern Development. But to go slow before we actually dive into this, we need to have that plan before we adopt this one. So we table it until we get it.
Yeah, I...
Plan development plan. So we'll just have to be done.
All righty. Moving on to a new business agricultural zoning ordinance discussion continued.
Yeah. So I did the survey. I was very popular. And nothing really conclusive could be found from it because, you're right, everybody has very different opinions. And I had, like, I don't remember off the top of my head, but like, two votes towards five acres, two votes towards fifty, one vote towards a hundred acre limit. So really, the main point of having this discussion is because, the reason I brought up was because you allow agricultural uses in commercial zone, in C2. But only for parcels that are over fifty acres, I believe. So that's why Matt could do what he did on his land. Moving forward, there is no other parcels that are fifty acres. So you're kinda, you know, there's not really any agricultural use that can be done anymore in Montego. It's up to you if you wanna change your ordinance or recommend to city council to change it. And that needs to be a discussion that we, you know, that you guys have among yourselves. Or you do that public input plan and have like a land use plan managing your decisions or guiding your decisions.
I mean, as you mentioned, agritourism is on that, you know, it's hot for Tennessee and definitely our region right now because it's a good thing, in my opinion. But Montego has to decide how they wanna handle that. I think that's probably a city council plan thing. What do you think, Marilyn?
That's, I mean, we're gonna have to have direction as we move forward with it to make sure we do what's right. While we have the system with everyone. And it's sort of like tiny homes. I think we, there may take a little bit of time to get there, but once our decision's made, that's what we'll do. I don't wanna rush into it, is what I'm saying.
Right. I mean, because I know we're gonna have some animals coming down the pike for the property next to the Military Museum. That's coming down the pike. Is that, will that be affected?
I mean, he doesn't... I don't think he's in the correct zone for it, right? He's in R1.
He's not. If it's downs.
It's downs, yeah. Yeah. And he doesn't have the proper amount of acreage to get rezoned.
He's got thirty-six acres, I guess.
So it's not enough if he got rezoned to C2, if he was bordering C2, but...
He was bordering C2.
But, I mean, your zoning ordinance limits them at fifty acres, so...
This is why we need that workshop. These are the kind of issues that we need to have consensus on before we move on.
Yep.
These can't be haphazard. There are long-term goals here. We call ourselves a regional planning commission. You don't wanna throw away any tools you might need, such as agricultural zoning to protect our escarpment or our beautiful landscapes. But it just needs a lot of work before we throw it out there.
That will be covered in the town master plan with the architects, right? With the town, the public meetings and et cetera?
Yeah. And actually, the next meeting's the nineteenth, April?
The nineteenth. And they're the twelve. October the twelve.
Okay. Let me see if she didn't change it to the nineteenth. Janet sent it out. It's Thursday.
Mayor, that next meeting, we can make that presentation committee to you in there. Okay?
All right, now I'm talking to... You're talking about city council meeting. I'm talking about the next town hall meeting is the nineteenth. It's the nineteenth at six o'clock at the Methodist Church because invitations were sent out to the county mayors. Of course, you all...
Five to seven.
Five to seven? Okay, at the Methodist Church.
The last day I had was on April 12th.
Well, again, Janet got out of town. I was expecting to see some people.
That's the nineteenth Tuesday at the UNC, five to seven.
Yeah. And so that everybody can be involved in that discussion and that development. And then we will the council. And I'm just saying, it's supposed to be hiring an architect once we take the summaries and develop another plan. And land usage will be done with that. But I mean, we want everybody involved in it. That's the reason we've had four, five meetings till... But I mean, we want everybody involved in it. That's the reason we've had four, five meetings till, I think we've had five so far.
Have we gotten the, um, the youth, uh, people involved? I saw the demographics of everyone. Have we included like parents and, um...
Invited to school and principal.
Have we did?
Yeah, and we actually sent them out letters this time to bring them if they want to.
Okay, okay. I just, I just think that all segments of our community, a lot, a lot of them are meeting goers. Does that make sense? Um, but it's important to get their input.
Well, I think we're gonna do a survey too, aren't we, after this last one? We're still gonna do the survey?
No, I was told that we weren't going in.
Okay, well, if we feel like we need it, we can decide after that, but we're trying to reach out to everyone. That's the reason we sent invitations to the school, to invite the parents, and to invite the teachers. We invited, actually, the principals from Griddy and from Mary, the three county mayors, uh, the commissioners. We invited everybody we could think of to come to this last one.
Gotcha. All righty, any other discussion, Anya, about that?
Um, yeah, I mean, do you have any direction that you, for me, to go back and research or bring back?
No.
I don't. It kind of seems like...
Hard at this time.
Because there's so much new development coming in, it's hard to make decisions without a land use plan.
It really is. We need a land use plan.
And it seems like there's just so much updates in the last year or two.
Just moving.
Yeah, I, I think a land use plan will solve a lot of issues. Um, what's, I mean, is, I know, I need it to make my decisions, and I think, I'm sure our commissioners feel the same way. Uh, we need to know what the community wants and then make decisions accordingly.
And I agree, I mean, and that's the reason for doing the town hall meetings, to get the community's input, the residents of the business, is everyone's to come back up with a plan, and I'd say, with the land use, where we're going, what we're gonna do with it. I mean, I was told yesterday, which is true, more commercial land has sold in the last six months in Montego than ever. And they are probably aware of it. The parcel out here, sold beside the city hall. The hopefully market sold, the property beside a Harley's sold. If James closes this next week, I think he said next week, those parcels have also, and people are asked, oh, all these parcels are now closing. That, I, that industrial part has been developed with someone you, the one you're talking about, the R1. Those are large parcels. There's not been, um, well, several people said yesterday in the bankers, they might seen this much growth in ten years, probably. You know, last year, there's been more parcels sold than before.
So, with those considerations, let me just ask the question, um, you know, water is our biggest concern, and sewer for that matter. Um, our role as a planning commission is to take that into account, Anya, or what?
I don't know, I mean, we met with Beth today, and again, we'll go over this with y'all. And that was one of the things we discussed, because we've been working on infrastructure grants, we've been working on American recovery money. We're trying to get ready to get the money that's gonna be released through state revolving funds. What she tells, thirty-three billion dollars today is going to go into infrastructure, gonna be divided by fifty states on the margins, so it's never been released. So, we're trying to make sure, as far as the city council, that the infrastructure's there, that the growth plan's there for the sewer plant and for the water, the ionized reduce, everything, and that's one of the things we're also pursuing with Southeastern Development that we've been working on for months. Uh, but that was part of the discussion as well today. Yes, the council's looking at that, but y'all, we've got to know what's going on to be able to, to know how far we can grow. We've also met with Tracy City, so we, we trade all the Tracy City's sewer. So, we've got to know how they're growing to be able to control what we're doing. So, all that's gotta go tandem, and there's a lot going on, and a lot we've got to get done, which we will.
Is there some, an impact fee that's...
There's not yet, but we discussed that today too.
Okay, because I mean, if, if it's coming our way, my concern is water and sewer.
So, every time a plot goes through, it has to be signed off by the proper authorities?
Okay.
But isn't something that PC has to have a piece on, that's something else that's, you know, you have people looking out for your best interest?
Okay, great.
Yeah, back to your original question, is that our remit to look at utilities?
Well, now, that's, that's done on a site plan.
So, that's...
Signed off on a site plan, including...
Capacities?
I'm sorry, what?
Capacities?
When, when he, when he signs that, he says it works.
Okay.
And that includes, you know, it's like septic, you know, you gotta have, you gotta self-septic off on a site plan.
So, once that's signed off...
And it rolls.
And, and that is not our responsibility, that's water and sewer.
Exactly.
And that's the ones that are signed off on it.
It's not our responsibility.
They sign off on it.
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
But there is an impact fee we are pursuing, we sent the question, him test today.
That's a little scary.
Okay, gotcha, yeah. And that's why you're on the board.
Can I get some clarification? When John signs off for water and sewer, is he signing off that there is sufficient capacity, or is he signing off that it is available?
Both, it should be both, Nate, because that's one of the things he's now keeping in check, and we've discussed with the council. But first, yes, it is available. Secondly, he's checking the capacity to make sure that we have enough, because we know what, where we're about. Once we get the ionized from Tracy and the assembly, which we're working on clearing up, we know what, we've got areas to work on ourselves. We know where, what capacity level we're at, what percentage, and where we're gonna be in two years, where we've got to, we're probably have to expand in two years regardless, because of all the residential, much less the commercial. But yes, he does.
Any questions, commissioners for Anya about the agricultural? Okay, all right, I'm gonna move on to, uh, Commissioner Provo.
I think we discussed that we take these site guidelines and put them in a workshop format instead of doing it during our regular meetings.
Gotcha.
Uh, because the site guideline questions circle back around into what our remit is, what do we do?
Can I just, uh, outline what I've handed out to you guys in that?
Yes, please.
So, the first four pages is what's currently in your chapter ten site plan requirements and your zoning ordinance. The next page after that is what Ed sends in, and so the highlighted parts is what's not already included in the requirements. So, I guess it's up to you to have a conversation during the workshop, if that's something you want to include, where is your jurisdiction? And, um, and then Garrett and my suggestion is on the last page, something Sadi Daisy does, it's almost like a checklist, where they have everything signed off by, uh, the building inspector, public works, police department, fire department, city hall staff. Um, and it's sort of like a, they look at the site plan and access control, all the access points. If that's something you want to include in yours, it could be, it could be done. You guys could discuss it during the workshop.
My question on the workshop, do we need thirty or an hour?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Prior to you.
Okay. All right, and we pass the public comment section for next month. Uh, any other business commissioners before I move on to persons having business before the commission? Grant, Marilyn, Richard, Ed, Peter, myself, I think that's it. Anya, any others before we, okay, thank you so much. All right, let's move on to the last part, which is gonna change for next month. Um, we made the decision, um, before anything we vote on to have public comment on. Right, so that will start next month. So, let's have the hearing of persons having business before the commission. You get three minutes. Anybody wanna chit chat about anything? How about it, Nate?
Yeah, I just was following up on the lighting ordinance, and I would encourage, I agree, it's a complex subject. Um, but I would encourage you to think about, given that other developments are coming in, and the fact that several people have talked about this being a critical issue, to at least think about looking at that ordinance and adopting some downlighting guidelines within the commercial district, which is a fairly simple, straightforward thing to do that doesn't require pulling the whole lot of ordinance in. It simply helps guide our future commercial developments, like we did on, on Petro, to say, hey, we want the lighting that you use exterior to meet these guidelines. It can be done as simply as it pays.
So, that would be for new development that was coming in?
Correct.
Do you feel, uh, that you can do that synopsis?
Uh, probably if I could talk to Anya.
Would that include lighting for signs?
No, that, that, it's two different things, and that's, the signs is one, and then there's another one with lighting, because you've got two different issues there.
Yeah, but it's lighting.
Yeah, but I'm saying, you're still talking two different...
You don't want backlit signs, you want sides of...
Yeah, but there, if you read this, there's two different types of lighting in here. That one signage and one...
That could be included in the discussion.
As far as the perimeter lighting, if you want to say, for lack of a better term.
Uh, to answer your question, I'd have to do some more research.
That's the reason Earl recommends...
But I'd be willing to do that, if that's something, but I, I wonder if that's not a simpler, a smaller bite of the apple.
There's gotta be a smaller bite for that. Uh, it needs to be implemented sooner rather than later, if this is all coming.
Or wait.
Earl, could you look at the, the lighting, because you've got development in other places too, how they're actually implementing it now, to where we can look at implementing something without pointing to something you recommended would light up? Because you deal with this with building codes, you deal with this with the signage.
Well, there's no other jurisdiction that's doing this that I think...
There's nobody else that's doing it.
So, I think it's considered.
Okay.
I can, uh, go back and ask if you, if they know anyone who has expertise on this topic.
That would probably be best.
User-friendly, something that we can implement in commercial lighting. All right, I know I'd heard in some of the comments that residential lighting was one of those issues, but that's not right now, I guess. Okay.
We did find out with some of the residential, Nate and I both did, because we actually got the group lights that came to us. It wasn't us, it was like one of the lights going to the church. See, the lighting scheme that we use, if it's toward the road, the town pays for it. If it's toward the house, the person pays for it, or the business. Well, this was the church, had a new light put in, and the person was complaining about the light, and we said, do you really need to talk to your neighbor, because we can't control that, that's the one that the, like, they're co-op put in for them. So, a lot of these issues we're finding out, the residential overbids are more personal issues than it is something that the town can control.
Sure, that's good neighbor policy, right. Uh, anybody else?
I got a question, as you brought up, about the sign, lighting for the sign. Now, I was originally told that new signs had to go before the planning commission, but I don't, I don't ever see that. And the planning commission needs to approve those signs.
The only time the planning commission approves is a new development, just like RBT, they had to have. The sign ordinance is actually in the zoning ordinance.
Right, and, and just when we had a plan review for the minor subdivision for the country mark, Chad Reese actually stated that the sign had to go before the planning commission. That was a comment on his review.
That's a good question, Earl.
And, and we did go and get a permit submitted to the city hall. We're not sure where it went from there, but, you know, permit was granted. So, I'm just curious, being that the site, I think it actually states, uh, the requirement for a site plan is pretty detailed in the current ordinance.
Yes.
But a lot of times you see things coming in that don't include all that, and that's fine, there's different reason why you guys might say, not necessary, not applicable. So, the sign was just a question, since we're talking about lighting, I'm curious, who does, with bigger developments coming in, big sign, neon?
Yeah, that's an excellent, excellent, excellent question. Um, we've only had the RBT sign come before, so...
Yeah, you're...
Do you do say that the new...
Southern tires is getting rid of some of it.
It's fixing to break around, and we did theirs.
So, anything commercial with a sign?
Any, any brand-new development that's got a lot of signage, has to come before the planning commission, and it is reviewed by Southeast Economic Development. But on the other side of that, the little places like y'all got, you know, when you've got a place that's just moving into a little part of that, that's moi.
That's why you're an asset.
Yeah.
Um, did I answer your question, Tim?
Yeah, I, I think, I'm just, I think it's a process that you guys are currently working through right now.
We are working through a lot, yeah, we're trying to be a lot more user-friendly and consistent, um, as best we can. I think we learned a lot. Um, but yeah, that's only one I heard about, but apparently, we're maybe hearing about more, so, okay, gotcha. Anything else? I mean, honestly, please, chit chat. Go ahead.
Um, I got a question. Our property is, what you know is the, we're on a farm, one hundred ninety-six acres. If we were wanting to put a house on there, and that's, I know we have C2, but we have the zoning, the ordinance for agricultural use, and because, um, a farmer's house is considered incidental to the farm, we should be able to start building on there? So, I just wanted to vote before I did that, and got shut down. I wanted to make sure it was okay that we move forward to do that.
Well, you know, I did a deep dive into agricultural use during this whole process, and, I mean, in theory, you're right, if it was an agricultural zoned, um, parcel, but it, it wasn't, it's a C2 zoned parcel, and that, that changes things a little bit. So, I don't know how that changes, and that's gonna be an Anya, um, discussion, because I know originally, that's what you had wanted to do, and I know it's in the back of, you know, what you need, what you want done, but because it's a C2, it's not as simple as...
Right, right, that's what I wanted to bring it to, and not just, you know...
Yeah, and I don't know if it's, you know, is it a subdivide and putting a house on a separate five acres?
And where it would be, would be back almost to the corner where, like, back up to the corner where Coos Rift is signed up, so it almost is really adjacent to residential land anyway.
Right.
So, but I just wasn't sure how to proceed.
I tell you, I tell you the best way to do it, if the city even will pay for it, legal opinion.
No, we don't. You know, I've already been recommended legal opinion. We will discuss that stuff. If we really need it, we just don't randomly do it.
But wasn't that what you were just talking about, building the, the garage before you build the mining structure, wasn't it? Just what you were talking about?
But that's typically in, in a residential district.
And this is a state...
And all this is kind of moving now with, uh, I mean, I don't mean that in a bad way, but agriculture being in the C2, I mean, it's...
That's what threw us off the whole time.
Yeah.
Conclusive.
I, yeah, and I don't know how it got changed to C2, I mean, it's been a farm since nineteen oh seven, so...
It was never really an agricultural zone. If you want to go back to it, and I went back to two thousand nineteen, whenever all this was discussed, it was still commercial property, and that's another discussion that we don't want to even get into, what it was. And it, the bank had it, and, you know, Terry and them had it, as, you know, different things before y'all, but with C2, with agriculture use, which didn't include animals. Agriculture in that definition was plants, you know, and it wasn't a business. And then we had to actually amend the zoning ordinance to include your animals whenever that was done, after we came on board. Is that not correct, for the husbandry? We had to do the amendment?
But I think that goes back to our agro, agribusiness, our discussion here is that, I mean, if that was traditional, you would have a house there. I mean, that's what it says in agricultural use, so that's where our gray area is. So, we're gonna have to figure that one out.
Okay, so that would come like after the workshop on land use?
But you would still have to have a permit for a house.
I would.
You can't just start building a house. You have to see this man here.
I think you gotta go through the permit process to see it.
Before you can, because with the Pope Barn, the Pope Barn turned into a different building. See, that's where there was some confusion.
And, and we really need to try to get that resolved somewhere down the line too, you know, and doctor me with y'all, and see what we need to do, get, get that little issue fixed.
Yeah, because if Pope Barn is acceptable in agricultural use, you don't need a permit, so it's... I've optimized a lot of things during this process, so... All right, um, any other questions on that? We're, we're gonna work on that house.
Yeah, Ed, just, okay, so that's, I'll just wait for y'all, I don't know what to do. I can, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about that eighteen, and then if we need additional help, I'll, I'll reach out to about the county council, or I'll...
Well, before you reach out to, make sure that the council's here.
It's gonna come to you.
Yeah, because we got into that discussion too today, and make sure that Earl's included too, because he has to sign off on a lot of this.
And maybe our staff can help me find a solution.
Okay.
But, um, maybe after this meeting, or, I mean, I have Max somewhere, I think we should, or he's, he's to reach out to us, so we're in contact.
Best answer is gonna be a tiny home, I'll bet.
It's gonna be mother-in-law's week. Anya is gonna be working with you, that's how we're gonna resolve that, and then we're gonna find a solution. Okay, any other, Tim, you're so good at this. Any questions, any other questions?
No, no.
Are you sure?
No, just listening.
Okay, anybody else? All right, once again, we're gonna try to make this a lot more user-friendly and interactive, and make sure that we are hearing what you have to say as well. I think that's what we agreed on during our workshop, so, any, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All right, all those in favor? Perfect. Thank you all.